Yep, well, here it is, sir, to show you that you get.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, sir. Let the record reflect, everybody is with us today, Mr. Holden is on the phone. Do we have any public attendance?
We're good, they've signed in.
Okay. Student achievements?
None this evening.
Student discipline?
None this evening.
Academics?
Academics. Dr. Fordice has a video that we want to share with you. I'd sent you an email and notified you that the State Department had reached out and that Peterson Central was identified as a CSI school due to numbers of years of low achievement. And so, they have put a video together just to give you a little better idea. We are required principals. Mrs. Santelli and myself are required to attend a conference the beginning of October, and so when we come back from that, we'll have more information about how this moves.
Okay.
Been developed by the Office of ESEA, improvement and support to help global education agencies or LEAs understand the roles and responsibilities of those who work with schools newly identified for comprehensive support and improvement. Let's take a few minutes to discuss how the Office says ESEA improvement and support provides technical assistance for school improvement across our state. One or more of the schools near LEA have been identified for comprehensive support and improvement, or CSI. CSI is a designation describing our state consolidated plan for the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of nineteen sixty-five, as amended by the Evergreen Success Acts of twenty fifteen. This plan outlines procedures by which the West Virginia Department of Education provides support to low performing schools. What is CSI? CSI is a federally mandated school improvement designation that identifies and supports schools requiring the most assistance in improving student outcomes. But more than that, it's an opportunity for schools to engage in a structured, data-informed process that helps them grow stronger and more effectively. Whether you're a teacher, principal, or district leader, your role is vital in helping every student succeed. CSI is one of the ways we work together to ensure that all schools have the necessary tools, resources, and support they need to grow and thrive. How are schools identified in West Virginia? The West Virginia Department of Education uses data from the balanced scorecard to identify CSI schools. The scorecard looks at multiple indicators of school performance, including academic achievement in English Language Arts and Mathematics, student progress in English Language Arts and Mathematics, graduation rates, English learner progress, and student success measures such as attendance. Every three years, the West Virginia Department of Education identifies the lowest five percent of performing Title I schools and schools with low performing subgroups for CSI based on the dotted scorecard indicators. This ensures we are focusing our support where it's needed most. What happens after identification? Once a school is identified, it enters a three-year improvement cycle with an additional year for sustainability. During this time, the school receives charter support from the WDD and its LVA. This includes diagnostic reviews, support for strategic planning, and professional development aligned to the West Virginia standards for effective schools. The goal is to build sustainable systems of improvement led by the school and LEA teams, supported by data and driven by a shared commitment to student success. The role of the LEA board. Thank you for your commitment to supporting student success in your LEA. Let's take a moment to explore the important role your board plays in the improvement of schools identified for comprehensive support and improvement. Your leadership sets the tone for how improvement is prioritized and sustained. As board members, your role is to ensure that the district provides the necessary support, resources, and oversight to help the CSI school effectively implement its improvement plan. This includes approving and monitoring the use of federal and state funds, supporting evidence-based strategies, and holding regular discussions about progress and outcomes. Your engagement also signals to the school staff, families, and the community that this work matters, that every student deserves access to a high-quality education. By asking thoughtful questions, celebrating progress, and staying informed, you help create the conditions for lasting positive change. Thank you for being a vital part of this process. Together, we can ensure that all students in West Virginia have the opportunity to thrive. Why this matters. CSI isn't about labeling schools, it's about lifting them up. It's about ensuring every student, regardless of background or ability, has access to a high-quality education. And it's about working together, educators, families, and communities, to create schools where all students thrive. Thank you for your dedication to our students and for being a part of this important work. If you have questions or need support, the WDD is here to help. Together, we can make a lasting difference in the lives of West Virginians children. For more information, contact the West Virginia Department of Education's Office of ESEA Improvement and Support.
When, when does this support, when does it actually begin to take place?
So, when we go on October seventh, they'll start to give us more, and then there's another conference in December that we go to and they start to write their plan for improvement at that point.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Moving on. Consider and approve United Dairy Incorporated's low bid for milk bid for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year in the amount of an estimated cost of two hundred and eighteen thousand ninety-eight dollars. The motion for approval? Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Consider and approve Lewis County baseball team traveling to Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, participate in Ripken Experience spring training from March twenty-nine, twenty twenty-six through April four, twenty twenty-six during spring break. There will be no cost to the board. Do you have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Can you hold on one second?
Yes, ma'am.
The public cannot hear. Okay, try again.
Good to go. Consider and approve agreement between Lewis County Board of Education, Western Board of Governors on behalf of the Western University and its School of Nursing for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Do you have a motion for approval?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Consider and approve the purchase of a twenty twenty-seven International CE school bus from Worldwide Equipment Heritage in the amount of one hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars. This bus is a replacement bus for twenty-four, twenty-one. Do you have a motion for approval?
Make a motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I, I just have a quick question. So, this is out of ver- this is something we're buying that's not just in the normal rotation like we buy two every year?
So, we had a bus that had damage from a small accident, but it went the length of the bus, therefore the bus had to be totaled and was considered a total loss. So, we have to buy a bus to replace that one, and insurance is paying about half of that cost.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Consider and approve a random understanding between Western University, Parkersburg, and the Lewis County Board of Education to provide field experience opportunities for students in the non-licensing development program in the area of residence of WVUP students for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Do you have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Consider and approve agreement between Lewis County Board of Education and Simmons Consulting to provide services to the students with hearing impairments for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Do you have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Consider and approve embedded credit proposal for case principals of agricultural science. Plan for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Do you have a motion for approval? I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Consider and approve the embedded credit proposal for building and maintenance cluster for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Do you have a motion for approval?
Make a motion.
I'll second it. Any discussion?
Could we get, could we talk about this a little bit of what this maintenance cluster is?
Sure, so the embedded credit is in our classes at the high school, and so this building and maintenance is CTE program. And so, if our students are in that program, they have the opportunity to also get a math credit while they're in there.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Consider and approve a support letter to local senators allowing an exception for R S. Section four zero nine A for school employees, Senate Bill seven twelve. Do you have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, we, uh, sure, and we learned about this at the Adam and John, and Dr. Stewart learned about this at the School of Work Association meeting, and, and Mr. Taylor from Taylor County actually, actually presented it and, and gave it to us to, to, to consider, so I would urge that you support it.
I've tweaked the letter a little bit from what he originally sent, but same sentiment.
This is to abolish the sixty days between retirement to let retirement be shorter.
Get them to be subs quicker.
Yep.
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Consider and approve a random understanding between Pierpon Community and Technical College and Lewis County Board of Education for dual credit pathway agreement for business management, applied process technology, and culinary arts for twenty twenty, twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year, level of WV. Do you have a motion for approval?
I'll make that motion. Mr. Holden?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Policies. Do you have a motion to approve as been provided in our agenda?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Dr. Stewart, on the subject, is, is this a standalone policy?
It's a review of it.
Review, okay.
Yep, and it comes after all.
And that would, that falls under the, the entire policy criteria, okay. Personnel. Do you have a motion to approve personnel as been, as, as, as has been provided?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I have a couple of questions, personnel, as far as, where are we at as far as online classes for some of these positions are not being filled? Like a satellite class, are we making any headway on that, like at the middle school specifically for the math and science?
So, we have some options that we're looking at for those.
So, that's in the works, okay.
Dr. Stewart, any idea when the A D position at the middle school might be posted? Maybe it is in?
It has been.
It has been, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Approve previous board meeting minutes, September eighth, twenty twenty-five, regular session. Do you have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Consent agenda. Do you have a motion to approve, approve the consent agenda as been provided in board book?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. How state field trip request falls under that as well?
It does.
Finance. Approve payroll and payment of bills of one million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and two dollars and fifty-five cents. Do you have a motion for approval?
Make a motion.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Reports and discussions, facilities, transportation, and safety updates.
This afternoon, I sent you the report from Mr. Malika.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. So, we start off with Lewis County High School. Big topic is the condition of the athletic facility at the high school. It was learned about two weeks ago that we didn't make the standards for our first football game, and I went up there, took a look at the field. Understanding that it's a custodial issue, so maybe it's lack of planning, maybe it's a new set of eyes looking at it, but working with custodial staff, athletic director, and principal, then we've definitely made some headway as to improving the condition of the field, the bleachers, the presentation all around for the athletic events coming up. There's an awful lot needs to be done, and giving them as much support as, as I can to do so, ensuring that they have the right tools, making some deadlines, and I'm up there at least twice a week with inspections and input. So, that's the big thing going on at Lewis County High School. Then we have the twenty-five second clocks, they did arrive. We have not had an opportunity to put them in prior to the second game, unfortunately, but we will put them in this week. Irrigation controls, I need to verify, but that should have been in last week on Friday, so I'm gonna verify tomorrow and make sure irrigation controls are working, and then update on the public announcement system, both interior and exterior. Question about the high school, I need the key in on. Middle school, we've been able to accomplish quite a lot that's on our list. The plumbing is a big issue, and we just finished all of that, and that's for the repairs, to include the water conservation that passed in right behind them. So, yes, we made repairs, we didn't replace any fixtures, but we made sure that all the drains are working properly, all the water usage is being appropriately gauged, and then the water conservation came in with new flush valves and new toilets and whatnot. So, plumbing, plumbing looks pretty good at the, at the middle school. On every school, I will say that we are starting initiating the program of not only the panic buttons, but ensuring that the fire alarm system does call out to the nine-one-one center without any hiccups. So, the, a lot of the communication is telephone lines, which is antiquated, and we're bypassing that directly. So, all monitoring and callouts to the nine-one-one center is done through the panic button system, and it's a nominal fee, a one-time fee, but it's well worth the money. Jane Lou, we have, we had a little bit of a hiccup with the construction of the roof, the new roof. There were three, four days where the chemical smell, glue, and primer for the rubber roof was overwhelming to the classrooms, and we were able to solicit high school students, in particular the J R T C. So, with some fan rentals at one end of the building to the other, we were able to get the building to breathe. Being a closed campus, then the J R O T C stepped up in full uniform for three, four days and sat at the entrances to make sure that the little ones weren't escaping, all right? And it was quite a sight, so we're very appreciative of high school stepping up for that. But that, that work has been completed, all the, the rubber has been sealed, and so the chemical smell is no longer a factor. However, the roof progresses, and unfortunately, this week, we're gonna run into inclement weather. So, with any of the roof work that we have on any of the schools, high school, Jane Lou, we will expect some problems. We're gonna address them as, as best we can, but we do have plenty of people on staff to hold the water that's gonna leak through the roof while the roof's exposed. The next big project that I'm looking at for Jer- for Jane Lou is the parent traffic loop, not much different than what's going on with Peterson, but a little bit smaller in scale, however, very much needed. And Mr. Holden is, is very familiar with the, the desire for us to clean up that front lawn, make sure that it works, and have preliminary design. I've already spoken with the principal, spoken with Dr. Stewart about it, bus driver's input, and so I think that we're gonna make some real headway. Be great to have it done by the end of the year for the parent loop at Jane Lou. Leading Creek, not a whole lot going on. We do have some P Os that have just been approved for the HVAC repairs on, on a regular basis, so that's, that's progressing nicely. There is a, an idea that maybe we should get a trash enclosure at Jane, at Leading Creek, and that'll prevent the locals from driving by on their way to work on the weekend, dumping the trash, so we're working towards that. We also have that, the storage shed that we're, the plan is to remove, actually select a demo of the storage shed at the bus garage that we do not use, and relocate it to a degree to Leading Creek. Plenty of space, solid wood, and I think we can make that happen. It's gonna give them plenty of space at Leading Creek for storage of their equipment. Peterson, of course, the big thing is the Peterson Loop and Parent Loop. I'm pretty committed to having it done by Halloween, so I promised initially by the end of the year, but I do believe that Halloween is a, a realistic target. We just received all of the proposals, and I sent up a selected, selected a contractor for the work, so we're looking at, for the work, what was it? Yeah, eighty thousand dollars to get that traffic loop taken care of, so sent that up for a P O, waiting for approval, like, release the subs to get that work done, and they're pretty committed to getting it done by Halloween. The drains in the bathrooms, they're, they're faulting, and I think that we can get in, get in there, sub in there, and clean all that stuff out for reasonable cost. The water conservation is done, lighting conservation is done. Next big step that I'm taking is the HVAC unit ventilators, and we talked about that, the heating and cooling inside the classrooms. So, we're looking at a couple of alternatives. Initially, replace, we had enough money to replace six units, and that was gonna create a problem, six out of thirty, you can imagine the teachers, you know, lining up for that one. So, looked at a couple of other options, a different system altogether, power requirements, three-phase power, another thousand amps to the building, that may be cost prohibitive. A hybrid, we're looking at that right now. I have a meeting, I believe, Wednesday with a couple of subs, and a hybrid could do the job without an additional power requirement, and that will bypass the chiller, which is aged out. By a bow means we can abandon the place if we remove it, and that will also stop the condensation in the ceilings in all the classrooms. So, I'm gonna pursue that, and I really do hope by next week that we can come to a decision, or, yeah, two weeks, we can come to a decision to get this done. There is no additional cost as far as we can see to the board or to the county, this is all within the S V A funds, and so I'm, I'm pretty excited. I think we can get all thirty classrooms heat, cooling, no more condensation, using the new boilers that we have, get rid of the chiller, and they're gonna have temperature control year-round. That's, that's my, that's my plan. Roanoke, beautification, we've done the, the nice thing we've done for Roanoke, we had a little bit of time, and we took the bell that's sitting out front, spruced it up, and now it's turned into a child recognition. So, children come out, they have a great day, they do something spectacular in class, and they can come out with pictures and photos and whatnot, and everybody rings the bell. So, that's what we're doing at Roanoke. As far as the gym floor goes, gym floor is a twenty-five thousand dollar investment. Trying to get that down a little bit, but I think we need a new gym floor prior to the new tables coming in. We're getting a gym floor that's more conducive to all-around activity instead of the sports court. Let's see, and next thing I'm looking at is possibly the fuel tank, and the fire pump and the generator, those are undersized, they've run out of fuel a couple of times historically from what I've been told. So, if we can upgrade that, put the fuel tank on the outside of the building, it's easier for fuel transfer instead of coming in in five-gallon buckets or five-gallon totes at a time to fill up a two-hundred-gallon tank. So, that's what we're looking to do. It's at Roanoke. Central, I don't know if you, I'm sure you've seen it, asbestos abatement, so we're getting rid of the asbestos once and for all, no lo- no longer do we need to monitor the asbestos. We're getting rid of it, and that is, as I understand, that's the last of the We're getting rid of it, and that is, as I understand, that's the last of the asbestos in our portfolio. We're getting rid of that. Panic buttons are coming in as well, and that's every building. And I believe they started today, as a matter of fact, looking at the boiler. So if not today, then tomorrow, but we're, they made a small investment for exploratory work, get the boiler going. We want to make sure that everyone in this building here has heat this winter.
What's the cost on asbestos?
Seventy-five hundred dollars.
What's that?
Seven thousand five hundred dollars for the abatement. The annual inspection and monitoring was five thousand dollars.
Okay, I mean, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So in other words, every year we paid five just to inspect, so we can pay seventy-five hundred, it's gone, and we never have to pay again to inspect.
That's exactly what we're talking about, sir.
It's what Dr. Stewart explained to me.
That's exactly what we're talking about.
Give credit where credit's due.
Yes, yes. So the FRM building, we do have the green light for roof repair. Unfortunately, it didn't make it last week. We would have liked to have the roof repaired before the rain, which is this week. Expect, I'm going to expect a couple of phone calls, however, after this week, then we'll have the roof repaired and that'll get us through the winter. Then we can talk about roof replacement for the FRM building. Same thing goes for the transportation building. We do have significant leaks during the rainy event for the transportation building. We're guys, we deal with it, but it's still not pleasant to work and have rain where you're, where you're working. So we hope that after next week, we can start getting repairs done on the transportation building. The plumbing issues at the transportation building are significant. Takes a long time, so we've been able to convert one of the bathrooms from a officer's bathroom to a women's bathroom, adding a couple stalls to that. We have more women than just one stall is, is justified. So that, that helps, but we still have significant problems with drainage at the transportation building, and we're getting that cleared up. The boiler, we have just received a, a winning proposal for the boiler. Long lead items on the pumps, as I understand, they're coming from France. However, we do, we have made connections with the manufacturer and we do have the approval for the PO, so I've released a subcontractor to get that boiler fixed. So in that building, we will have heat this winter. And that's what I have. Any questions?
I, I like this format.
Okay.
Yeah, cause I, I mean, we see it, it's, we see it started, who's, who the person who's authorized to be doing the work? For example, ESG. I like this. Second thing, this is probably minor, but a year ago, we had a flag put up outside of this building. It's, the weather has really worked on it. Could we replace that flag? Have you looked at it?
As, as a matter of fact, sir, the, the flag replacement process has already begun. I ordered the flags, I received the flags, and the people who are going to do the honors are a high school JRTC.
Alright, thank you.
So we're waiting on chief to make arrangements for that, probably not this week because of the rain. But all the schools, the flags look like that, unacceptable. All the schools need both the American flag and the state flag, and all the schools are getting them, they're in my office, ready to be replaced.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Anything else? Thank you.
Hey, um, good report.
Dr. Stewart.
Just a couple of really quick things. Progress reports went home to students last week. Robert O'Land participated in the Mount near mile with Lauren Linens from three oh four and Kelly Tenney, or Kristy Tenney from Upsher County. So they came over and walked the track and are participating in that process. The other thing, we had talked about a work session to look at the CEFP and those projects. And so that work session has been scheduled for September thirtieth at five-thirty.
Very good. Mr. Faly?
I'm good.
Mr. Bush?
Uh, no comments tonight.
Mr. White?
No comments.
Mr. Holden?
Yes, I got a, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to say that I think that the, uh, reports that were just given from transportation and the, about the facilities reports, I think that it was very well, very well put out there. I mean, that we would see what's being done to these schools and, and, and I'd just like to compliment you on that, that, that's, it sounds like you're getting a, a, a lot of things accomplished. So, that's all I have.
Yes, sir. So the day of the next meeting will be the work session on September thirtieth at five-thirty, and then that'll be followed by a regular meeting, according to former Dr. Stewart, Leading Creek on October thirteenth, which is LSIC at five o'clock, right? Do you have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Everybody have a good evening.